Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are here by directive to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, May 15, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting work sessions on a brownfield site conceptual revisioning plan and the Flock Safety Automated License Plate Reader System.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for May 15, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our first work session topic is the Flexsteel Industries Brownfield Site Conceptual Revisioning Plan. I will turn it over to Economic Development Director Jill Connors.
Good evening. Jill Connors, Economic Development Director. I'm here just to let you know that Dan Fox from ECA is going to stand up and present this information to you. It's based on a plan that got put together starting a couple of years ago, actually, of what could actually happen down in the Flexsteel, former Flexsteel site at 3,400 Jackson Street. So there's some information coming to you today, and once you get to the agenda of the regular meeting, you'll have a chance to receive and file the plan. Thanks. Here's Dan Fox.
Hello. Thanks. Thanks for having us here tonight to present on the Flexsteel Brownfield Site Revisioning Plan. I am Dan Fox. I'm a senior planner with ECIA. I also have with me tonight Dawn Danielson, who is our Brownfield Projects Manager out at ECIA, and Emily Smart with Blackstone Environmental, who is the environmental expert that has been working with Flexsteel site. So to give you a little bit of an overview of the project that we've been working on, so the Flexsteel Industries Brownfield Site Revisioning Plan was prepared for the city by ECIA with technical assistance from Blackstone Environmental. So the purpose of the plan is to work with project stakeholders and the community to identify potential future uses of the Flexsteel Industries site. So funding for this, for this project was provided by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, though it should be noted that the project was funded wholly or in part by ECIA, but the EPA, but the contents of the document did not necessarily reflect the views and policies of the EPA.
Hey, Dan, before you go on, could you, would you mind raising the desk a little bit? There's a, there's a little button right next to you, right there. Having a little trouble hearing you. If you get the mic closer, it might help.
Go on.
Yeah, there you go. It's magic.
There we go. Is that better?
That's better. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. So the outline for our presentation tonight, we will talk a little bit about the study area, its existing conditions, history, and the neighborhood context. We'll have an environmental summary. We'll talk a little bit about the ongoing environmental assessments that are happening on the site and some of the work that has been done so far. We'll look at the public input that's been collected, so an overview of the process and the key takeaways, and then we'll talk about some of the recommendations that we are making through this plan for the future of the site. So first off, the study area. So the study area is located at 3,400 Jackson Street in the city of Dubuque. That location is near the intersection of 32nd Street and Jackson Street. The study area covers approximately 51 acres that are owned by Flexsteel Industries. Flexsteel seized this operations at the site back in 2019, and most of the site's buildings were deconstructed and removed in 2019 and 2020. So this is an aerial photo showing the study area for the project that was taken prior to the deconstruction of the buildings on the site. So this is from May 2015. And this is a more recent photo from September of 2021 after the buildings were deconstructed, or most of the buildings were deconstructed and removed. So a little history about this study area. The original, it has, it has a long history of industrial uses dating back to 1911 with the Brunswick, Belkey, and Collander Company. They operated on the site between 1911 and 1931. They were a furniture manufacturer and primarily manufactured cabinets for radios and for phonograph machines. That company closed down its operations in 1931, and then in 1936, Flexsteel located on a portion of the site, and in 1937, a company called General Dry Batteries also occupied a different section of the site. General Dry Batteries, their production peaked during World War II and eventually closed down in 1958. Sometime later, Flexsteel expanded their operation, acquired some adjacent land, including the general, the site that was previously occupied by General Dry Batteries. So existing site conditions. So the southern portion of the study area includes the site of the former Flexsteel manufacturing buildings. So all but two of those buildings have been removed from the site and deconstructed. Much of the asphalt and concrete that is there was left in place. That includes both surface parking and driving areas. There is some underground concrete, so roughly half of the former manufacturing building contained a crawl space or basement that was up to 12 feet deep at the northern extent of the building, and so that space has been filled in, sloped for proper drainage and seeded to grass. So you can see from the photo provided there that the southern area of the site, closer to 32nd Street, I don't know if you can see my pointer here, probably not. So this area here is kind of where the exposed concrete area is, former parking areas and some of the factory building. The northern portion here, there is some concrete, the crawl space that's been, has had soil applied on top and has been seeded to grass. So the northern portion of the site consists of a vacant area with wooded, grassy, and wetland areas. So this area sits adjacent to the Heritage Trail, as does the rest of the site. The Heritage Trail kind of runs along the eastern edge of the site. So it's a, the wetland area is home to a variety of birds, wildlife, and unique wildlife habitat. So Flexsteel has been working on plans to donate a portion of the wetland area to the Dubuque County Conservation Board, and the Dubuque County Conservation Board completed a separate site reuse plan for this area in 2022. So neighborhood context. So depending on how you define the neighborhood, the Flexsteel site is located either next to or within the North End neighborhood. So this neighborhood was built up in the late 19th and early 20th centuries, which is also the pre-automobile area. So without cars and trucks, people were less mobile, things needed to be closer together. The development pattern that resulted from those conditions includes small lots, multi-story buildings, and mixed uses. So the, the neighborhood has changed since it was first developed, but it's still primarily a residential neighborhood with commercial and industrial uses mixed in. So the North End neighborhood is home to a variety of businesses. So this includes restaurants, retail sales and service, and manufacturing businesses. So community initiatives. So the, the, the North End neighborhood does have some challenges. Based on census data that we have looked at through the analysis, the area has lower median household incomes and lower home values when compared to other areas in the community. But it is, there are still many people, residents and businesses within the neighborhood that are interested in, in making, making improvements, making things better. And there have been a variety of community initiatives that have been implemented and are currently being implemented within the North End neighborhood to help improve the quality of life. So some, just a few examples are the Bee Branch Watershed Flood Mitigation Project, so that's $240 million investment that includes, includes flood mitigation and also a, a community park amenities located within the area. The Central Avenue Corridor Initiative is making, working to make improvements along Central Avenue. Reimagine Comiskey Park is under construction, making improvements to the park. Various housing programs the city is working on using to make improvements to housing with a $14.68 million investment over the next three years. The city is also working to replace lead service lines, not just in the North End, but throughout the community. So that'd be $33.85 million through state revolving loans and for other forgivable loans. And then healthy food access. So there's a 300,000 USDA grant that's been acquired to help improve access to healthy foods through indoor hydroponic production. So these are just a few examples of some successful community initiatives that can provide the foundation for future projects like the redevelopment of the former Flexsteel site and can continue to build on and improve the quality of life for the area's residents and businesses. So the environmental summary. So with the site with a, with a long history of industrial uses, like the former Flexsteel site, there have been several environmental investigations conducted on the study area over the years. Those investigations have found some soil and water, groundwater contamination at the former facility. So Flexsteel has voluntarily enrolled the site in, in a program called the, the Land Recycling Program that's provided by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. So through the Land Recycling Program, the owners and other stakeholders of a property can voluntary assess, voluntarily assess it and identify appropriate cleanup activities and/or other remedies to assure the protection of the public health and the environment. So the LRP process is currently ongoing, the assessments are currently ongoing, and at this stage, we don't know exactly how long it will take to complete that process, and we don't know what the outcomes will be. So because of this, this limits our ability to make some specific recommendations on future uses of the site through this plan. But we can do, and what we have done through this plan, is create a set of general recommendations that are based on community input collected through the planning process. So the plan and its recommendations can then be used as a guide for future actions to be taken on the site. So the Iowa DNR does have a full environmental record for the site, so any official documents related to the Land Recycling Program and any other assessments that have been done are available on the website with the link that's provided there on the slide. So in addition to the ongoing assessment work, there has been some, some abatement or environmental cleanup and abatement work done as part of the deconstruction of the former manufacturing buildings on the site. So asbestos and other hazardous materials removal was completed in September and November of 2019 in conjunction with the deconstruction of the buildings. Fitzgerald Deconstruction and Reuse was hired to salvage wood and other building materials from the site, and over 2 million pounds of wood and other materials were diverted from landfills, and 60,000 pounds of metal were recycled through that process. So our next section is public input, and as I mentioned earlier, the purpose of this plan was to work with stakeholders and with the community to identify potential future uses of the former Flexsteel site. So the, the process, and this made the process for collecting public input a key part of our planning process. So the process, the public input process that was used included three primary components, the first being a community survey. So this was an online survey questionnaire that was distributed to the community. There was a total, we received a total of 233 responses, and those responses had a 91% completion rate. Public meetings were also held as part of the process. So there were three meetings held between November and December of 2021. So each meeting, we had a specific theme, but the entire community was invited and encouraged to attend any of those meetings that were held. So Meeting One, the theme was the North End Neighborhood Association. Meeting Two was focused on local businesses, and Meeting Three was kind of a general public input meeting. There was also a, a public information campaign that went along with all of this that included press releases, social media postings, and direct mailings were employed to help spread the word about this process that was going on. So the following slides I have here summarize the, the key takeaways that were collected through the public input process. And so the first set of slides here are focusing primarily on the, the former Flexsteel site itself. So the first, first category we have here is commercial uses. So reuse of the site for commercial purposes was one of the most popular redevelopment options that was identified through the public input process. The most desired business types that came up through that process were grocery stores, restaurants, medical services, and other types of businesses that would primarily provide goods and services to the surrounding neighborhood. Community members expressed a preference to see smaller, locally owned businesses located on the site, and the southern portion of the site was identified as having the best potential for future commercial development, primarily because of its location near 32nd Street and the existing commercial uses that are located on nearby properties in that Our next key takeaway category was housing. So through the, the process, the community members identified a need for additional housing options in the North End, but there were some mixed feelings about whether or not the, the site was the best, or the weather housing was the best reuse option for the Flexsteel site. So when we asked questions, we got some mixed results. So only 36% of survey takers said that they would like to see housing as a future use on the site, but when we asked the question a different way, asking what type of housing you would want to see if housing was developed on the site, 68% said that they would like to see some type of housing located on the site, while 32% said that they did not want to see housing of any kind. So the percentages kind of flipped there when we asked the question a different way. But those that did want to see housing on the site recommended a variety of, of housing types, so going from single families up to condos and apartments. The community also suggested that housing could be mixed with commercial uses to create a walkable mixed-use area similar to the existing North End neighborhood. So our next category key, for key takeaways is light, or light industrial uses. So manufacturing and industrial uses were less popular options for the site compared to commercial and residential uses through the public input process. However, light industrial uses were discussed throughout the public, the public process as possible reuse options for the site for three primary reasons. The first being that the site is currently zoned for light industrial use. Number two is that other light industrial uses are located nearby. And number three, the local market may determine that light industrial use is the highest and best use for that, for some portion or portions of the site. So the northern portion of the site was identified as having the best potential for light industrial uses, primarily because of the existing light industrial uses that are located on nearby properties. So public input also indicated that murals, trees, and other landscaping could help a light industrial use coexist with other uses and mitigate any potential nuisance Our next key takeaway category is traffic. So vehicle traffic, especially truck traffic, was a frequent topic of conversation throughout the planning process for the site. So the area's manufacturing businesses rely on trucks to do their business, but many of these areas' residents also express concerns about traffic, safety, and noise. So moving forward, the residents and businesses should continue to, continue that dialogue that we had during the planning process and continue to work together to identify solutions to traffic-related issues. But then any, I think kind of the key point relating back to the Flexsteel site itself was that any future redevelopment plans for the site should include a careful evaluation of, of the traffic impacts of whatever that future development may be. So primarily a traffic study for any, for any reuses of the site. So the next key takeaway category is beautification landscaping and green space. So our, one of the, one of the main messages we got through our, through our process was that the appearance of the site is important regardless of whatever the future use may be. So people would like to see the site provide a clean, safe, and comfortable and inviting environment that incorporates trees, public art, and landscaping into the site design. So community members would also like to see improvements made to the area's infrastructure, including streets and lighting, and landscaping elements could be used again to serve as a transition zone between less compatible land uses such as industrial and residential. Green space could also be used as a way to connect the site itself to nearby recreational or natural recreational areas like the Heritage Trail and the wetland area to the north. So our final key takeaway category for the site is constraints and opportunities. So any future developments or plans for the site should consider its environmental history. Decisions regarding the future development of the site should be made in consultation with a qualified environmental professional, and depending on the nature of any future redevelopment, environmental mitigation strategies will vary substantially. So the next slide I have here is just, just a very simple conceptual use map for the site. So to the north, you know, this is kind of that potential area for future light industrial uses, and to the south, you know, potential area for commercial and mixed commercial and residential development. So again, with this plan, we're not looking at making real specific recommendations, but just trying to, trying to give an idea of what the, what the community has said that they would like to see on the site. So some key takeaways for the wetland area that's located to the north of the, the former Flexsteel site itself. So the wetlands portion of the site presents an opportunity for recreational paths, overlooks, and outdoor recreation. So Flexsteel does plan to donate some portion of that wetland area to the Dubuque County Conservation. So trails through that portion of the site could allow for visitors to access the area from the Heritage Trail, and education materials could also be provided to draw visitor attention to the natural features of the site and its history as a former industrial area. Again, this map is kind of showing a potential conceptual use of that wetland area, so a potential trail coming off of the Heritage Trail and some potential outdoor structure locations. So I think there was, you know, in the, in the Dubuque County Conservation plan, reuse plan for the site, I think they, they talked about some overlooked structures or potentially pavilions and that type of thing located in a portion of the site. So our last takeaway category is a gateway to the North End. So community members felt that the Flexsteel site and surrounding neighborhood could serve as a welcoming gateway to the North End and the broader Dubuque community. So signs, banners, and flags typically used throughout, are typically used throughout the city to delineate neighborhoods and districts, and signs and banners could not only help cultivate community pride, but they could also help craft a unique identity for the neighbor, for the neighborhood or district. So just with the site's location, you know, close to Central Avenue and kind of a main entranceway to the site, I think the general idea was that, you know, some, some signage and some, and in general, the, the beautification and landscaping of the general area could make it into a really welcoming gateway into the community. So finally, moving on to recommendations. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the recommendations that we have included in this plan are general in nature and use the information collected through the planning process to create a community input-based guide for the future of the site. So the future, first set of recommendations we have, the first is, addresses the environmental topic. So again, the recommendations that all future developers of the site should be encouraged to complete their environmental due diligence. Developers should follow state and federal guidelines for environmental mitigation and cleanup. And so the responsibility there is with the developer, potential future developers of the site. Our next recommendation category is area improvements. So the next recommendation would be creating signage that identifies the, the North End neighborhood. The responsibility there would be with the city. Next area improvement recommendation is to increase lighting and infrastructure around the site, particularly along Jackson Street. So the responsibility there would be with the developer. The next recommendation is another area improvement, so neighborhood and streetscape beautification, and this would be a shared responsibility of developers, the city, and property owners within, within the area. Our next recommendation is for traffic circulation. So we're recommending a traffic study be completed prior to any moderate to high-end intensity reuse of the property, and so that would be the responsibility of the developer that's proposing any future reuse. And then finally, land use. So as I mentioned before, the site is currently zoned for light industrial use. Some of the potential uses that we talked about would require or consider rezoning of a portion, a portion of a portion, a portion or portions of the site to accommodate the highest and best use of the property as identified through additional public outreach and also development realities. So that would again be a partnership between the property owners of the site and the city of Dubuque would kind of carry out that process that's been proposed by the owners. So that is the end of the recommendations and the, the end of the presentation that I have here. So I'd like to say thank you all for listening, and I think we have some additional time for questions.
We do, in fact, a solid 15 minutes. So thank you very much, Dan. I really appreciate that presentation. So questions or discussion? Mr. Sprank?
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Thank you, Dan, for all this information. When I started to get involved with the city government, this has been a key thing in my neighborhood that I've always been concerned about. It's 10 blocks from my house. It's amazing that there was some, there's still some minor confusion as to who actually owns the land, even though I keep reminding folks, Flexsteel still owns the land, so is, that is correct. Flex, thank you. And then you mentioned the environmental study, like, how long would something like that take for a few, for another developer to take care of?
I think Emily could probably answer that question.
I'm gonna have to lower this. Hi, Emily with Blackstone Environmental. As far as the due diligence for a future developer, that would really consist of a Phase One environmental site assessment at this point. That sort of thing can be done in as little as 10 days, usually a maximum of 30 is what we typically expect. As an environmental professional myself, I would not encourage a developer to do any additional invasive environmental sampling, i.e. soil and groundwater sampling, as that has really already been completed. The site's been characterized, and so for a developer to satisfy that due diligence for their lender, say, it would be a matter of 10 days to, to 30.
Thank you. Absolutely. Yeah, Ms. Russell?
Thank you. It, it sounds like some really great opportunities, especially for our, our North End residents. My question is to better understand how the next steps happen and who makes those decisions. My question is to better understand how the next steps happen and who makes those decisions? So you, at this point, we're just have general recommendations, so who takes the next steps and how does that work?
Well, I think, as we mentioned before, the site is currently owned by Flex Steel, and so I, I think the, the next steps, you know, they're, they're currently working through that land recycling program process, process with the Iowa DNR. And so the results of that process will determine kind of the next steps in that, in, in the overall process. I think ultimately they, since the property is privately owned, it's kind of up to the property owners to determine what their, what their next, next actions would want to be with the site.
Okay. On, on the, on the land recycling program which the, the property is enrolled in, the groundwater portion, we, so basically you have to complete groundwater and soil as two potential exposure pathways for users of the site and show that they are not harmful to either human health or the environment at the levels that they exist at, or do some action to, to clean them up. So Flex Steel has been monitoring groundwater for a period of a year out at the site, and we recently submitted a report to the DNR asking for the cessation of groundwater monitoring because we show steady and or declining concentrations of contaminants. On soil, Flex Steel plans to follow the plan that the DNR and they are working on together to obtain regulatory closure for soil, and we're hoping to finish that in the next, I would say, six to, six to eight months is the goal.
Thank you.
Quick, quick follow-up on that real quick, then, please. The, so six to eight months on that one, the other one submitted, you said the groundwater study is, has been, they've asked to cease that at this point?
Correct.
So are, are you saying, and I'm not holding anybody to any numbers here, but I mean, in general, within a year, are we looking at the ability to, for Flex Steel to know enough information to start?
I would say that's a very reasonable timetable. Yeah, all depends on all the factors, but yeah, that's a good, that's a good target.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Dave, or Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Resnick?
That's all right, thank you. So you said that the, it has been characterized. Could you tell us what that has been characterized as?
Yeah, so as far as characterized, we've determined horizontal and vertical extents of contamination in soil and horizontal extents of contamination in groundwater. We are satisfied and submitted a report that we understand the groundwater contamination. It's very common of what you would find in the City of Dubuque. It's, it's lead in water, it's arsenic in water. Those are super common naturally occurring contaminants that exist in water, along with a little bit of petroleum contamination that existed from a prior underground storage tank release that was a known, was a known factor before we even started sampling. And so the characterization of the soil, basically, we can, you know, draw a three-dimensional area that we know, okay, this, this is where the lead contamination is, this is arsenic, this is pH is, you know, certain, certain compounds that we would expect with industrial use and just honestly, you know, typical background levels that we see in this area of the state. So once you know that, you can say, okay, you're safe to use this site at these levels for this use, which could be industrial or commercial or residential. And so that's the process that Flex Steel is currently working through with the DNR to arrive at those decisions.
Super. Thank you. And to encourage development, you generally, would it be, I'm asking your opinion, advantageous for Flex Steel or somebody else to complete the Phase One environmental cost first? I mean, is that kind of something that's in the way of developers? Or what's a, and what's a ballpark cost of a Phase One environmental study?
Sure, that's definitely not in the way of developers. A cost on an environmental Phase One is probably somewhere in the arena of $2,500 to $3,500. So really, as a line item in their, in their development cost for a site, it's, it's pretty low. And a Phase One has been done on the property, several have, and they're available at that DNR link that was shared. And so really, that's checking a box for their lender to say, okay, we've done our due diligence. The information is there, and any environmental professional can explain to them.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sprank.
Mr. Resnick? Anybody else? I have a couple, oh yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Mike Van Milligan, City Manager. I, I don't want people to go away here thinking that environmental is not a big deal on the site, because it is. And so it's probably going to restrict certain uses to certain places on the site. So, you know, while all the information's known, the information will inform a develop, a potential development.
Thank you, Mike. Good clarification. Okay, so a couple, a couple things here before we, before we wrap it up, unless other questions come up here, too. So, so technically speaking, developers could get involved now if they wanted to, and they worked out a deal with Flex Steel. I mean, just, it's a private entity that could sell to another private entity, essentially. And they'd all just have to work through environmental steps to be able to figure out what they could build there and develop there and that kind of thing. So there's nothing necessarily stopping that from happening, except that there are a couple, a few variables that are still out there waiting to be known, is what I'm hearing. Okay, so that's pretty accurate. Okay. So as far as this council goes, what are the next steps for us in this? I mean, I, I understand there's a, there's an item on the agenda tonight that is to receive and file this report that you've given to us today. Is there anything, and maybe this is a question directed at Mike, too, but I mean, what's, what's next for us as we think about this? Because Mr. Sprank is right, I mean, we hear about this all the time. This is a, it is, you know, there are a couple of what I would call sort of linchpins in the North End that are, that, that sort of, everything else hinges on those. Central Avenue and the redevelopment that's going on there and the things that are, that we're talking about and development there, but then this one, too. And, and it all fits together because it is all the North End and a very important part of the city. So I guess the question that I think most people are asking is, where do we go from here? How does this work? So maybe for us, you know, what, what's expected of us, Mike?
Sure. So it was very correctly stated that it's privately owned and will be privately developed except for the discussions they're having with Dubuque County Conservation, which I don't have any idea how far along those discussions are. So I don't know if there's actually something about to happen with some of those wetland areas or, or not. But the city does still have a role in this. First of all, there may be some incentives that the city offers if there's a, a development that wants to go in there. That's very common for the city to do that, especially to get a site redeveloped. Also, the city 30 years ago entered a partnership with Flex Steel in Dubuque County because the, so what would that be? The northwest corner of the site, they had a, I think a showroom and a maintenance building back there, truck maintenance building, and it would flood from, back up from the Mac Okita River. So the, the partnership we entered was a dike was built back there, and then a pumping station was put in, because when you build a dike, you, you have to remember, not only you keep water out, but you keep water in. So there had to be something to pump water out. And so the pumping station is a three-way partnership with Flex Steel, the city, and the county. And so that certainly could be part of the discussions with different purchasers, depending on what part of the site they want to buy. Flex Steel, as far as the fact that they're in this partnership, and if they want to sell the site, will they stay in the partnership, or will whoever buys parts of the site take over their role in the partnership? So yeah, there's still relationships that exist on this site.
So that, that's helpful to know that kind of, you know, what our role, and then obviously some of the recommendations here, too, would be a role in identifying the area and things like that, like we would in other areas, depending on what's developed there and how things move forward.
Oh, absolutely. So, you know, we have an economic development department, and they're very aware that this site exists, and, you know, would, as I said, we would discuss incentives to help it get redeveloped. And also, the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation is very aware the site exists. And so, you know, continuously, when people contact them or as they identify potential opportunities, we'll see if they can help Flex Steel move the site. So far, none of that has happened, but that doesn't mean it's not going to. And matter of fact, I believe it will.
Great, thank you. So I think an important point to make as we move forward into the rest of the meeting here, if we choose to receive and file the item that's on the consent agenda later, which is this plan that's in front of us, or the, the document that you've given us, I, I think it should be made clear that this is not us saying that this is the plan, we're sticking to it, we're moving forward. In fact, plan may be a bit of a misnomer, I don't mean to throw that on anybody, but like the, you know, it's, it's a little bit more of a further study of the site, right? I mean, just looking at things. I think sometimes when people hear the word plan, they get a little stuck on, well, this is the plan, so we're going to move forward with that plan. I, I think it's really important that we all recognize that this is something that we're continuing to look at this, we're continuing to move it forward, and we have a lot more information and then more to gather on the way. So it's all very helpful, but I also, I also want to make sure everybody's expectations are in the same spot here as we, as we talk about that. Go ahead, Mike.
It's intentional that it's titled conceptual plan.
Yes, the term conceptual, yes. And visioning, yes. Big, big thinking. Okay. Any other questions before we wrap up here? Okay. Well, thank you very much for this information. It's, it's very helpful. We're glad to be able to have this discussion here, so thanks for being here this evening.